Part five and athletic coaches and 11 volunteer coaches.
Yes, you do have one.
Thank you. Dr. Erie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Fletcher, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Wonderful. Now we need to certify that we only discuss those things just outlined?
I certify.
I certify.
Certify?
I certify.
I certify. And then we also need a motion, please, from actions in closed meeting. First, I'll go ahead and mention the two matters, and then if there might be a motion, student 202510131 for home-based instruction and 202510132 for alternative education placement, both as recommended by the discipline hearing committee.
I move. Will you accept the recommendation of the discipline committee?
Thank you, Dr. Erie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Whittington, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, now we need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Remove.
Thank you, Dr. Garrity, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Fletcher, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, now if you'll please join me for a moment of silence for prayer or reflection. All right, thank you so much. And if you'll join me, please, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, everyone, we are going to start off tonight first with some recognition, beginning with Ms. Davis for ACE's student recognition, please.
Good evening. One person can make a difference, and everyone should try. This quote drives our theme at the elementary school this year, to be the one who makes the difference. The following students were nominated by staff members for doing just that, making a difference at ACEs. They excel at being kind, helpful, and being leaders. These students not only demonstrate our lower expectations, they go above and beyond to make a positive difference in the lives of others. Congratulations to Madison Bandy, Mary Lou Whittington, Brian Morales-Mora, Annabelle Elrod, and Savannah Carter.
All right, we get one more. There you go.
Ms. Davis? All right, next up, we have Dr. Wheeler with years of service recognition.
Evening, Dr. Tanner Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Harper, and guests. It is my honor to recognize members of our staff for their dedicated years of service and education. Each of these individuals has made a lasting impact through their commitment to our students, schools, and community. We will begin by honoring those staff members who have reached five years of dedicated service. Following that, we'll recognize those who have achieved 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, and 40 years of service. Each milestone represents not just the passage of time, but a profound dedication to shaping the lives of our students and supporting our school community. On behalf of the school district, we extend our deepest appreciation to all of our honorees for their commitment, passion, and enduring contributions to education. If you were able to join us when your name is called, please come on up and accept your certificate and pen. Accepting the five-year award, Brittany Allen, Jessica Beach, Karen Fries, Holly Hill, Gina Peruccio, and Taylor Redman. Accepting the 10-year award, Dr. Norma Krenshaw, Jenna Lee Easter, James Green, Rondell Hill, Wendellum Jones, Rebecca McFadden, Tim Moss, Crystal Owens, Joy Royal, Ian Sheed, Lauren Spencer, and Danielle Wilson. Accepting the 15-year award, Jonathan Garmin, Ashley Oliver, Carla Terry, and Jennifer Walsh. Accepting the 20-year award, Benjamin Bowman, Mary Harrison, Mason Lane, Alex Pritchett, Letty Rather, Bethany Schillen, and Todd Sperlot. Accepting the 25-year award, Ellie Hayes and Dr. Jan Medley. Accepting the 30-year award, Kristen Crowder, Charles Fitzgerald, Silva Mills, and Roberta Pegram. Accepting the 35-year award, Rebecca Galding. And accepting the 40-year award, Kathy Comerford.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
So we have some additional awards this evening. These awards are from the Virginia School Board Association, and these awards are for members of our school board and our clerk, Monica Jackson. And this is for their service in attending different professional learning opportunities as board members. There's a whole host of activities that they do every year. So Ms. Jackson, I see you're around the corner, so Monica. Okay, and we have an award of honor to Dr. Tanner Anderson. An award of excellence to Kay Fletcher. And an award of excellence for Robin Whittington. Award of honor to Dr. Wes Erie. And award of honor to Dr. David Garrity. Could we get you all to stand with your certificates, please?
I know, we should. Oh, switch certificates, you've been very nice.
So our board members do so much more than just sit here once a month. They really do a lot. So please join me again and congratulate them.
Thank you, Dr. Harper. All right, now we are going to get ready to move into public comment. Anyone here for public comment? Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone? All right. Hearing none, I also wanted to say that if you are considering whether you want to stick around for the duration of the meeting, no one's going to have their feelings hurt if you start to mosey. Not at all. But we do have our student representative report, and we're so excited to hear all the amazing things happening with our students, so please do share.
ACHS was wrapped up with a successful homecoming week with a lot of exciting activities, including dress-up days, a powder puff game, the pep rally, hallway decorating, and an incredible parade with participation from all three schools, along with the traditional king and queen competition. On Saturday evening, the students danced the highway at the 2025 ACHS Homecoming Dance. The Medford League held a home game with the entire student body in attendance. We were so proud of our student athletes, as well as our student body, who made signs with players' names and cheered enthusiastically for both our teams and the visiting team. All sports are in full force with cross-country, golf, volleyball, and football. Our volleyball team remains undefeated so far this season. Football team is holding their own with a 3-3 record. We are super proud of our golf team, who finished their season during September. And cross-country is looking forward to the district championship on Wednesday, October 15. Scholastic Bowl has just begun, and we are looking forward to a successful season. FFA students traveled to the State Fair recently for the FFA Career Development Event, which included several demonstrations and contests. The ACHS Junior Law Roll Team placed third for Forest Street Field Day. ACS, ACHS is currently celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with an assembly planned for Friday, October 17, along with bulletin boards, student art displays, and classroom activities. Millie County Middle School celebrated an exciting homecoming week, though with outstanding student and staff participation in Spirit Days and Homecoming Parade. The enthusiasm and school pride has been remarkable. Our fall sports season has been very successful. The ACM, the ACMS Golf Team successfully hosted the district tournament and earned an impressive second-place finish. Volleyball continues its strong winning season, and our ACE team has already hosted two meets for all 10 teams in the district and currently sits in second place overall, with one meet remaining. It's been a season full of spirit success and teamwork at ACMS. The past month has been busy and exciting at ACEs. Our students enjoyed their first assembly of the year with Speaker Jim Jordan, bullying prevention expert. He entertained our students while also emphasizing the importance of being kind and including others. The PTA organized a wonderful mother-son event with fun activities outside. Our September Tigers of the Month were recognized and had the opportunity to ride on the roar flow in the homecoming parade. We are looking forward to the first Scholastic Book Fair of the year happening this week.
So, thank you so much. Ms. Brown, yes, please, Ms. Brown, please introduce yourself, because this is your first meeting sharing, isn't it, the report? Yes, please share a little bit about yourself.
Oh, goodness. I'm a senior at Lake High School. Right now, I'm doing cross-country, and as I said, we have our first district meet on Monday. Not the best, but at least finished. That's okay.
That's awesome.
School's been pretty good so far. I mean, Davidson's good.
Class for next year.
Next year. I've been looking at the colleges, but nothing concrete yet.
I appreciate it very, very much. All right, awesome. So now we're going to move into instruction, and we'll start first, Dr. Browning, with the school improvement grant, professional learning.
Well, thank you. I am very happy to update you about the professional learning opportunities that have taken place during the first quarter. As you can see from our overview on the first slide, we use a multi-layered approach toward professional learning in Amelia. So we have PD sessions, PD cohorts, embedded PD during faculty meetings, instructional coaching, PLCs, and leadership training for administrators and teacher leaders. So far this year, we've had a number of PD sessions. We've had sessions that were offered outside of school hours that included an SOL alignment PD session with a focus for reading, English, and math, where we unpacked our standards, we explored our new curriculum, and we explored the existing high-quality instructional resources that we already have, so that we could really focus on improving our Tier One core instruction, as well as that Tier Two instruction during the tutoring groups. During those sessions, participants will be able to be paid through our Title II and our TSI grant funding. Down the after-school sessions, you can see that some of our features on the next slide have the opportunity to participate in high-quality professional development sessions and cohorts. Division Eight instructional team got together and organized a PD for secondary English teachers with the Department of Education. It was highly attended and had really positive feedback. It was definitely a collaborative work session, where they really focused on improving our instructional practices to get to the rigor of the standard. That was a first for us, but we're looking forward to potentially having a math, a science, and a history follow-up with the Department of Education in collaboration with the Division Instructional Team. We have a master coaching cohort currently. Our reading specialist, our new teacher mentor, and the high school administrator have joined that cohort, and they will be going to four in-person sessions, as well as a follow-up virtual with networking in between. So they're able to network, as well as expand their instructional coaching practices. We also had six participants in the MWEE Watershed Professional Development Sessions. They were sharing very positive feedback, and they look forward to now implementing those lessons in their classrooms with students. On the next slide, you'll see that beyond all of this, we just keep professionally learning every day. We have a number of opportunities that have been offered during school hours, so that we can support our teachers' professional learning with more kind of job-invented practices. Our ITRT has offered a number of sessions, as well as regular office hours to support with technology. All of the topics that she's used so far have come from feedback that she's gotten directly from teachers or from building administrators, so she's really responding to what the need is. Our Division Math Coach has been supporting in PLC meetings during school days or right after school for the middle school and high school, also doing one-to-one support with lesson planning as requested by teachers. The reading specialist at the elementary school have been facilitating professional learning community meetings weekly, as well as coaching by modeling lessons for teachers in the classroom, as well as teaching students how to choose just right books for that reading-for-fun time that is really so important, but sometimes students don't quite know how to pick the right book. They've done co-teaching, as well as helped teachers create skill-based small groups. Our reading specialist at the middle school has been supporting with those PLC sessions after school and then doing one-to-one lesson planning support as requested by teachers as well. Our new teacher mentor, Ms. Harris, is doing weekly and bi-weekly coaching and check-ins for all of our new teachers, as well as our second-year teachers. And the support that she provides is tailored to each one of the participants' needs, as well as the schedule and the timing of it. She is also our science coach, and she has been working with science teachers to plan hands-on lessons, as well as helping them use grant funding to get equipment for those lessons when it is available. She's been supporting with planning, as well as PLC meetings for the elementary, middle, and high school. We have school-based instructional leadership training through our partnership with the NIAT. The elementary, the middle school, and the high school have all been participating, building their leadership teams, and then their leadership teams turn this professional learning over to the faculty, typically in faculty meetings. So all of our professional learning opportunities are really directly connected to the priorities that were identified in the last spring during that needs assessment that was done. And as part of that needs assessment, we had gotten survey data from teachers. We had looked at multiple different data sets that included academic and non-academic data sources to drive us figuring out what the needs were, and now we're really focused on tailoring those opportunities to the needs. A few little snapshots from the different sessions we've offered. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Dr. Browning about our professional development?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, doing some great things. All right, next up, Dr. Browning, we have you again for profile of a graduate update.
So we really just wanted to refresh the profile of a graduate and make sure that it aligned to what we were currently doing or using. So there have been some different additions, as well as a few things that were removed. For the most part, it remained largely intact, but on page six for English, we did remove balanced literacy as under the BLA Act. That is not a model that we are currently using, and we replaced it with high-quality instructional material, which all of the schools have been adopting. We also removed the MAP assessment and growth assessments, because we're no longer getting those state growth assessments. We added the balanced literacy assessment and the CIP bed Mark assessment. On page seven for math, we removed number talks and guided math, as now with our high-quality instructional material that we've adopted, we're going more toward a math discourse, as well as using that concrete representation on abstract models for teaching math at all levels. So we replace, we added those two components, and we also added the high-impact tutoring, because we've seen that makes a big difference. On page eight for science, we removed the experimental design technical language, because that wasn't something that we were currently still doing, but we kept the rest of the initiatives that we were still using. On page nine, we removed the flipped classroom and dual enrollment, but we were able to add AP World History US courses. On page 10, we removed drama and theater. We weren't currently doing that anymore, but we were able...
Sorry, you guys know it's a tenders, tender topic.
But perhaps one day we'll get it back.
Great answer.
On page 12, we removed French, as we were no longer offering French. But we are still offering Scottish. But on page 13, we removed the JTTC Diesel Technician Program, but we do have the rest of the offerings that are still there. On page 15, which is the second workplace skills, we just adjusted where it used to have juniors doing the education for employment first, and seniors are doing that. And previously, sophomores were doing job shadowing day, but it was more appropriate for the juniors to do that. So we just made those modifications. And on page 17, for the elementary schools, civic engagement and responsibility, we added Trumpet Tree. That's a great community event, and it's highly attended. For the middle school, on page 18, we added they're doing peer mentoring, and this is a new program, and we're really excited to see this take off. We go to page 21, which is the career exploration page for the high school, and we added the reverse career fair, which is an exciting addition. We've updated the pathway charts, the chart on page 22, again, just to make sure that it aligned to the pathways that we were actively offering and students were participating in. Give it a little bit of a new look, but it is still following the career plus her pathway and then program course offering model. And then on page 24, we did the same. We were able to add floor culture, which was kind of an exciting addition there, and then we just made sure that all of the offerings were things that we were currently had students taking and offering. We've also updated the pictures, and with some really exciting things that the students and teachers and staff have been doing. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Browning? All right, thank you so much. I was going to say, but wait, there's more. We are going to move into our information agenda, and everyone's very favorite topic, it's fun, every year, is our calendar committee update. What do you have for us this evening?
Well, as you know, our calendar development process is totally underway. So we know our process is grounded in seeking a lot of stakeholder feedback and collaboration. So please feel free to jump in at any time with any questions when you have.
Don't worry.
I have my hand for the right.
I just want to say thank you, because you took some, one of my suggestions, and I really, really like option three, so there you go. That's my vote.
Thank you, Kay.
We were in the information agenda, where we're not yet voting. What if we were, Kay would go with great. No, go ahead. I'm so sorry.
So in September, we have been able to get into stakeholders. We developed our calendar committee, and then we developed the survey. Our calendar committee members on the slide. We have... But we have a great calendar committee group, consisting of Amy A. Gaborit from the elementary school, Kristen Crowder from the high school, Tracy Dixon from the middle school. So our calendar committee was able to meet together after the survey results came in, and we gathered the data and analyzed it. We looked at the questions that had more numerical responses, as well as the open-ended question responses, and we used that to craft the different proposals. How many responses did you receive? So we had...
Roughly.
We had 286 responses, and it was an 11-question survey. And participation. So I'm thinking that all of my data slides are not linked to this one. So I'm going to tell you what the data says, and I'll be happy to share the accompanying graphs with you at any point. So to the first question, it was asking if they preferred the calendar similar to this year or similar to last year. 57.7 of the respondents preferred that it be similar to this year. That one was, you know, one of the biggest majorities that we had. A lot of people voiced that they really wanted it to be similar. We then asked which day of the week would be preferred, and 57.7% of them preferred that it start on a Tuesday. 36% of them preferred that it start on a Wednesday. So if we did have a one day or two, they preferred it'd start on a Wednesday. So we also asked about the later start and what that might kind of create in order to get a later start, whether it is, I mean, later, it's reducing the number of days over Thanksgiving, lengthening the day. And 44.1% of respondents preferred that we do not change the calendar by doing any of those measures. We asked how they felt about our approach to using half-days to get enough instructional hours in. And 60.1% of respondents preferred teacher workdays to be on half-days, but it is worth noting that in the open comments, there were a number of people, specifically parents, who noted that the half-days are difficult for parents. Even though 60% was the number, we felt that it was important to make one of the calendar options more reflective of the input that we have for the open-ended questions. We asked about the half-day before Labor Day, and 51.7% of the respondents preferred the half-day before Labor Day. They preferred that over not having a half-day at all or having a full day off. So that was another one of the standouts. We also asked about Thanksgiving, and 53.1% preferred to keep it as a full week off. We asked about when parent-teacher conferences would be scheduled and about around what time of the year. And they preferred them to be scheduled at about the same time of the year, with 40.6% preferring that. We asked as well, if we had to change a day, what day would you like removed? And if they were going to give up a day to have a later start, President's Day was picked, but it was tied with, I prefer not to have a later start. President's Day was picked, but it was tied with, I prefer not to have a later start as the other answer. So our bindings told us that the majority preferred something similar to last year. That a full week off at Thanksgiving is a priority, a half-day at Labor Day is a priority, and a later start was expressed, though, in the open comments. And a lot of times, that was expressed in the, in both of the open comments section. There was also concerns about the half-day question. So you have the calendar options. Option one is the same as this year. However, one change is that we have no school on Columbus Day because as it turns out, Easter will be absorbed into spring break naturally next year. So we were able to put that day and use it for Columbus Day. It still has six early release dates. Option two, also similar to this year, but starts on a Wednesday. Since one of our questions, there was a slight majority wanting to start on Wednesday rather than a Tuesday. So we would have school on Columbus Day. Easter is still absorbed in spring break because that just naturally is happening. And we have six early release days. Option three, option three is a later start. We would start a week and a day later. We'd start on a Wednesday, August 18. We would have school on Columbus Day. Easter remains absorbed in spring break. Our last day of school is Thursday, May 27th, but this is still before Memorial Day that year. We would have six early release days for that option. And then option four, that was the one that we tried to hear the voices of the parents who were talking about the difficulty of half-day. So in option four, we start on Wednesday, August 12. Columbus Day is a PD day, a teacher PD work day, and it's a full day. Students would not be in school at all that day. March 15th is also a teacher PD and work day where students would not be in school that day. It would, and these are anchored around when the quarters end. School would end on Tuesday, May 25th, which also would be before Memorial Day. Be to answer any questions you have.
I think I have two questions about option three. In the what's different section, it says schools in session on President's Day. But in the picture, President's Day is off.
And it is off on President's Day. That is an error.
Okay, so hold, so option three, no school on President's Day.
No school on President's Day.
All right, so process. And then also, what else did I just say? Oh, on May, in option three? Says the 26th is the last day of school, but I think you just said the 27th was.
Yes, I apologize. I thought we had updated that one in Board docs. That was an error. It is the 27th.
It was updated this afternoon.
Okay, yeah, it was updated afternoon.
Other questions or feedback for Dr. Browning?
Did you have fun?
Yes.
Don't you love how everybody wants all the things? But there's only so many days and so many hours to make it all happen. I know.
It is a great, a great team, though. There are a lot of different perspectives, even though it's a small but mighty team. And they were very thoughtful in going through, looking at quantitative data we got and then comparing it to the comments and trying to come up with more options that spoke to the different voices that we heard.
So there still isn't personally, this is Robin with a parent pal. I want my children out of my house the week of Thanksgiving so that I can hand for Thanksgiving.
I'm here, I'm here.
We did discuss that one.
I'm just gonna tell- She wants Monday, Tuesday school.
She from the Philippines.
Kind of asked that in the other.
I know, and everybody wants that.
It was very-
Don't worry, when I fill out the survey, I fill it out. So now the parents or all stakeholders get a chance to look at the different options. So now you release the count, the option, four options and then they get more feedback. Okay.
And we'll be doing school visits to, during faculty meetings to just kind of explain the different options. So that way, different teachers and staff can get that in. Kind of get more input. And then we will do another survey. We anticipate that, let's see, go back to my slide. It will be the November, we'll spend in November. End October doing that and that we should be able to have a decision potentially in December.
The summary at the end is really very important where it says, this is, this is what's different in this one. Because if we just expected people to look at these colorful advent calendars, it's, it would be hard to pick out, yeah, I, I never knew.
Pretty colors.
Oh, keep the color, the same.
For the descriptions, read the summary. They are nice. All right, any other questions or comments or anything for Dr. Browning at this point? Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have our budget calendar and survey. We love a good survey. Mr. Trump. Hello.
So last year, we did our first budget survey. We're continuing that practice this year. You'll recognize who. It kind of takes some time to make some iterative changes. There really isn't much right now. Let's kind of get this settled first. The date's been updated for the new school year. The only question change we've added, if you scroll down just a little bit there, is we've specifically added a question at the end of each recommendation, what impact do we think that this change will have on the schools? I think that's when it kind of gets lost sometimes. We say, wouldn't it be nice to have this? Wouldn't it be nice to have that? Just hearing from the person, what is it that we, what is the specific impact we want to see? Because that helps us kind of balance, you know, ideas, you might say. This is a good idea. We can't afford that, but we can also, if we know what they're trying to affect, we can say that, we can probably do that another way. We can do it more cost efficiently. So that is the survey for this year. We also have the budget calendar as well. Once again, last year, we updated with significantly more detail than we had had previously. And it is once again quite similar. There's windows for all the different pieces we'll have. You'll notice this year, though, that there are some adjustments, specifically finer ones about board approval throughout the month of March. And initial discussions with the county. They are hoping we can have a budget fairly solidified a little bit earlier, specifically because they know our, their approval of the budget feeds into our ability to give out contracts. So we're recognizing that we want to try to as early as possible. However, this is a biennial budget year for the legislature, so a lot of those final bigger decisions will be considerably out of our business. But right now, we've kind of, have done this more to align with their proposed schedules and hopefully have things out and sewn up in a time we've earned.
This is great. Thank you. I think it's nice to hear from people, but it's also nice to have the timelines, you know, out there so you can kind of get ahead of them as much as you can.
It's a little stress-inducing just to see the checkbooks done.
Yeah, but I'd rather see it. Awesome.
But just moving ahead, just have these for your review. And I guess I'll come back to this later, but if you have any feedback, thoughts on changes or adjustments?
Anything for Mr. Trump for the budget calendar survey?
I like those questions that you added, the impact.
Yeah.
Taking in another example.
Small changes, something to do.
Awesome. Well, I think you're still here, though, Mr. Trump, for your finance reports.
When did you score? One, two, three, four.
Oh.
My notes are, I need to-
Question.
Today, I'm sharing with you finance report for September of FY '26. To meet our goals, expenditure should be at about eighteen point two four percent. We are above that figure at twenty-one point zero one percent. This is a continuation of the trend that we've seen early throughout this fiscal year. And as I've shared previously, these increased expenditures relative to projected year-long trends are the result of significant expenditures incurred early in the school year, one of which is, you know, our security grant expenditures. Since we carried them through from the end of last year, they hit the books much earlier than anticipated this year. So it's kind of driving things at a faster timeline. This month shows a slight improvement over the gap from last month. We are two point nine three percent above our projected average. And now we're at two point seven six, so it's starting to normalize slowly. And we expect these numbers will continue to move closer together as the year moves on. In the textbook fund, expenditures are at twenty-four point seven nine percent for FY '26. If you're working month to month, which I don't know who actually does that right now, but if you work, you'd notice that this is actually a lower percentage than last, than last month. And this is because we've spent considerably more money in the month of September than we had before. But we also appropriated all of last year's carryover. So it's a much smaller percentage of the new overall total, which is much larger. You'll see that carryover amount reflected in the revenues and collected revenues. Funds four and five for all new construction have expenditures of appropriated funds of fourteen point ninety-nine percent and zero percent respectively. And in the cafeteria fund, expenditures are at seven point three nine percent for FY '26. That's all I have for finance reports. I do have one appropriation. I'll be coming back for you in the approvals.
Okay, wonderful.
So technology, we're already at forty percent and what, we had some big ticket items there?
Yes, that is, as I'll approach in the, in the appropriation, we have a grant up for appropriation that required some upfront expenditures. And the appropriation is actually to, just like the textbook fund, where we added a lot of money and the percentage went down on the budget. When we go to appropriation, it'll be the same effect, adding some funds, some revenues and expenditures to that line. So we have that space back in that line.
Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Next, we have a couple items from Mr. Lynch, starting with our facilities update first, please.
Good afternoon. Right. We have just completed rollout this way of some enhanced endpoint security protection. This upgraded security software not only provides 24/7 monitoring, but also features automated threat mitigation, ensuring any detected threats are handled and neutralized in real time. We had a total of 135 maintenance tickets, 120 tech tickets, and 19 transportation tickets closed since our last meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Any questions for Mr. Lynch for facilities? All right, we also have you for field trip applications.
Yes, ma'am. You'll see quite a bit of field trips applications there. None of these are overnight. Be happy to answer any questions.
I love seeing this. Any questions for field trips and facility use applications? Sorry.
I had a total of three facility use applications. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the VDOT application because there are some red lines in there, just for clarity. The reasons for these red lines is because VDOT is, is a state entity, okay? They have a risk management insurance blanket that's through the Department of Treasury that already meets our requirements. So unlike, you know, third parties, normal facility use applications, there'll be a certificate of insurance, I'm holding, you know, a funeral or there would be some type of event that an outside organization would be going to do. The other thing to note is that this is, even though this is an open to the public meeting, VDOT cannot indemnify the actions of any third party. Okay, we've shared these red line changes to our facility use form for this specific request with our legal counsel. And they are recommending that we're good to move forward. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Lynch.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Harper, we have some fundraising applications.
There have been three requests, two from the high school and one from the middle school. And this is just for your information.
Perfect. Thank you. And Dr. Harper, also, we have a strategic plan update.
Yes, so the strategic plan has been updated for recent actions. I'm just gonna go through just a few highlights. Strategy one, result one, professional learning sessions have included mental health support, tier-one instruction, instructional coaching, and teacher support. Some examples are the secondary English VDOE conference, the VASCO Instructional Alignment Institute. Some of these you saw earlier on a slide from the Department of Instruction. MWE program, sending three reading specialists and Dr. Ramey to the VASCO Instructional Coaching cohort and the REACH Annual Conference on enhancing our mentor-teacher program. In strategy one, result two, the curriculum development team has been updated to be a division instructional leadership team as well as school-based instructional leadership teams, ILT, because we're now using the NIT, National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, framework. And so instead of calling it the curriculum development team, we have the division instructional leadership team. Strategy four, result one, our community engagement volunteer contacts are Grace Wyant at the elementary school, Patrice Jackson at the middle school, Robin Gary and Michelle McDonald at the high school. Strategy four, result five, our student mentor contact is our student support specialist, Amber Moore. These contacts have been updated on our website as well. Strategy six, result one, ACPS vacancies are advertised on our web and emailed to staff. The VASP and indeed recruiting sites have also been used for advertising vacancies this year. Strategy six, result two, a new salary study will be conducted this fall for use in our FY '27 budget process. And speaking of 2027, our current strategic plan expires in 2027. So we will be including funding in the FY '27 budget to address the strategic planning process. Can you believe we're there again already? Finally, all updates to the strategic plan have been posted to our website.
Awesome. Any questions for Dr. Harper? There's a lot of good work going on. Thank you for the update. All right, we also have two donations. So one for Ms. Davis, one for Dr. Ramey. So we'll start first, Ms. Davis.
Good evening again. I am seeking your approval for a donation from Launch Family Entertainment Park. They want to partner with us to provide 30-minute jump vouchers for students as prizes to be used for our take-home book program where students are reading nightly. They have books that are taken home, bringing back, getting new books. And when they are turning in their form to show what they've done, they go in for a drawing and this would be a prize that we could have for them as an incentive.
That's awesome. That's great. All right, wonderful. Any questions or anything from Ms. Davis? That's amazing. Thank you so much. And Dr. Ramey?
Good evening. Hello. We are seeking your approval this afternoon for a donation of seventeen hundred dollars. It was received from Amelia County Post 8759, Veterans of Foreign Wars. They specifically stated that they would like for us to use this money toward the national FFA convention that is coming up very soon.
It's amazing.
Thank you very much.
That's fantastic. All right, thank you, Dr. Ramey. And thank you, you know.
Do we send thank you notes from the school board or do the schools send them? There's some sort of things you said that you were, yeah, okay.
Something, the FFA we could.
Yeah. Yeah, we should be, can we, can you- Can we move that to action items?
You'll, you'll first need to vote to train, to amend the agenda and then, then you can-
Might there be a motion to amend the agenda to move that donations to action items? Thank you, Dr. Erie. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ruby? Can we move that down to action items? But while we're working on that, we'll go ahead and scooch on to the consent agenda. First, for the approval of the personnel agenda, might there be a motion to approve?
It's a move.
Thank you, Dr. Garrity. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Whittington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, wonderful. We also need a motion to approve the minutes from the September school board meeting.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Garrity. Is there a second?
There is.
Thank you, Dr. Erie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now approval of bills and information. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Whittington. Any discussion?
I will say, just for anybody interested, all my highlighted areas, Mr. Trump answered for me, so. No discussion.
Awesome. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move into action items. The first one will start with approval of policy IKFD. Dr. Browning?
The approval of policy IK-
The approval of policy IKFD, the alternative paths to attaining standard units of credit. This was presented for informational purposes in the September board meeting. Just kind of a general overview and reminder of it. This policy is designed to provide local school boards with maximum flexibility to redesign existing instructional hour requirements, develop new models. There are, um, the policy waivers would be available for secondary courses, including school board approved courses, career and technical education courses and local electives. And it would have had, it would establish the three pathways for being able to do this. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, I appreciate the quick overview, but you provided a lot of information at our last meeting, so I appreciate that too. Uh, might there be a motion to approve policy IKFD for alternative pathways?
Move.
Thank you, Dr. Erie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Browning. Next up, we have, um, Mr. Lynch with the approval of the ROE for phase two of the sidewalk project. And man, am I happy to see some sidewalks coming up out there. It's taken a while, though, man. I'm excited to see them coming up.
Yes, it's moving along. For your approval tonight, uh, you'll see the attached write of entry letter from VDOT. Approving this letter is basically lets them continue through phase two. Um, they're still in the phase one process, so I guess we're trying to get this ahead. Stay ahead of the game with us.
Awesome.
Until they're completed, they continue.
Outstanding. Might there be a motion to approve?
Smooth.
Thank you, Dr. Erie. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Whittington. Any discussion?
What will phase two look like then?
Phase two, I believe, is when we get towards the other half of the elementary, not necessarily connecting to inside the parking lot, but continuing down towards the academy. So phase one, from my understanding, uh, once they connect the sidewalk to the sidewalk to the elementary school, that's what they're considering.
And I'm sure that there's a, a technical reason. So many non-straight lines, just to avoid buried treasure in places or what's...
I wish I could give you an answer.
Okay. The boards were always alone.
Any other discussion or questions for Mr. Lynch? Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you so much, Mr. Lynch. Next up, we have Dr. Wheeler with approval for superintendent to hire substitutes, bus drivers, car drivers and tutors.
Good evening. I'm requesting your approval to continue to grant our superintendent, Dr. Harper, the authority to hire substitutes, bus drivers, car drivers and tutors for remainder of the twenty five, twenty six school year.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
You bet.
Thank you, Dr. Erie. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Garrity. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you, Dr. Wheeler. Next up is an approval of the MOU from Longwood University.
Good evening. I'm requesting your approval of the memorandum of understanding between Longwood University and ACPS that allows aspiring educators to participate in clinical experiences, including student teaching, practicum, field placements and clinical rotations.
Alright, awesome. Thank you, Dr. Wheeler. Is there a motion to approve?
Salute.
Thank you, Ms. Whittington. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you so much, Dr. Wheeler. And now Mr. Trump, approval of the budget calendar and survey.
So as you recall about six minutes ago...
I'm trying to run an efficient meeting here.
You said this was coming.
Again, for your approval this time are our budget calendar and the budget development, um, survey.
Okay, might there be a motion to approve?
Smooth.
Thank you, Dr. Erie. A second? Thank you, Ms. Whittington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Trump, but we also have you one more time for approval of appropriation for the cybersecurity pilot program.
Your approval this evening is request to appropriate seventy thousand one hundred seventy six dollars to operating revenues and expenditures for ACPS. This fall, ACPS was selected as participant in the schools and library cybersecurity pilot program. The vendor selected through the approved bidding process has requested that we use the build entity applicant reimbursement invoicing method, which requires participants, which would be us, to pay the service provider in full before seeking reimbursement for USAC. Uh, generally with USAC grants and funding that we have from them, quite often you'll get the award and the award is processed by the entity billing the school division for ten percent. And then paying, then the entity billing the organization for the other ninety. It can take longer. It's a bit more cumbersome for the vendors at times. And that's why we usually don't have appropriations from this program because it's just a bill on our... This time they're requesting we use this method, which required us to pay in full and then receive a large reimbursement after the fact, which is why you have this reimbursement here for you. As Ms. Fletcher asked earlier on, why are our, um, technology expenditures are so high at the moment, relatively for the percentage? It's because we went ahead and processed the expense for the, for some of the upfront costs for this grant. A big reason why we moved that ahead of the appropriation was cost savings in the timeline we had. These are annual renewal products. Um, and we had a current firewall cybersecurity, um, program that was coming up for renewal. Um, so instead of trying to negotiate with them to extend that contract and possibly have them say, "Well, you're not going to stick with us for very long. We're not going to give you beneficial rates or extra charges." We went ahead and started this one, knowing that this grant had been approved and the reimbursement would be, and reimbursement could be helped. So this is just to kind of finish that, close the gap and make sure our budget still has the space that was initially developed to have, um, after accounting for this incoming...
Okay. Excellent. Might there be a motion to approve the appropriation? So move. Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Erie. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, Mr. Trump. Alright, let me move into the donations for, I guess, do we maybe do them separately? Did you list them out separately?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so, um, for the first donation, hold on, let me come back up. The first donation to ACES, might we have a motion to approve the Launch Family Entertainment donation for roughly one thousand two hundred and twenty four dollars for a hundred and forty four vouchers?
So move.
Thank you, Dr. Garrity. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Whittington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Groovy. And let's look at the FFA donation from the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the amount of one thousand seven hundred dollars for the National FFA Convention. Is there a motion to approve?
There is.
Thank you, Dr. Erie. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Any discussion?
I want to say thank you.
Yeah, yes. Thank you. That's incredible. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, outstanding. So now, let's move on down to the superintendent's report for enrollment in ADM.
So, um, our September thirtieth ADM was fourteen eighty nine point eight two seven. At the end of September, K-12 enrollment was fourteen ninety seven and pre-K-12 enrollment was fifteen sixty two. This is, um, a lower ADM that we have had, so we are monitoring, uh, budget implications for this ADM. The, uh, September discipline reports are also provided for your information. And one other thing that I would like to add in my report, and that is that recently I've attended, um, two sessions. One, uh, one was a virtual session with, uh, VCU and the other was in person at the, um, Legislative Advocacy Conference from BSBA. And these sessions were on vapes and a lot of really interesting information was provided. But we, and we will be working to try to, um, work with VCU to see if we can get some parent information, maybe informational session with them if possible on, um, the dangers of vaping. They, what VCU has been doing is collecting vapes from schools and a variety of other locations and researching what ingredients are actually in these vapes. And what they have found, um, might surprise you. So you might expect nicotine in a vape and, and in some cases that there are vapes that contain cannabinoids. But many of these vapes also contain items such as alcohol, fecal matter, yeast, mold, bacteria, formaldehyde, arsenic, heavy metals such as nickel, chromium and lead, um, acetone, uh, things that, uh, chemicals that are in brake cleaners. It, it is absolutely unbelievable what these vapes contain. And I think if more people were aware, um, that there are only a few that have FFA authorization and, and so many of them contain these dangerous and carcinogenic chemicals. Um, and so I just wanted to share that, um, because I think that the public really needs to be informed on the dangers of these.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you. It's disgusting. Uh, but thank you for sharing that. Sorry. Uh, alright, so we have our school board member reports. What's going on, colleagues?
Um, let's see, I was at the, uh, homecoming parade, uh, plus we had a, if I remember correctly, we had a, um, ANTC board meeting not too long ago. And we got a lot of good introductory material based on our, um, some of the programs that are going on. We had demonstration or at least, uh, an actual visit from some of our students who are doing business in the hair cutting field, uh, promising us that we could all look like stars. Uh, just come get our haircut.
For free.
For free, for free. Uh, and what else? Um, planning on going to the, uh, the SBA board meeting in November, the day one in Williamsburg. Um, and, bush. But I attended a football game, but not the homecoming, as it turns out. I've been sad, but all my Michigan teams lost over the weekend, so I was sad for about twenty four hours. I'm feeling better now, thank you.
Um, I also attended the Legislative Advocacy, uh, Conference that Dr. Harper was referencing, and it was absolutely disgusting, uh, but so informational. And if anybody wants to look her up, her name is Dr. Michelle Peace.
Peace?
Peace. And she really is like the leading toxicologist in the country when it comes to vapes. And it was so interesting. They go out and blind buy from these vape stores and then test what they get and none of them are what they say they are. And like Dr. Harper said, all sorts of gross things, also alcohol. And, um, the studies that she also does on the people who vape into their shirts and then the toxicities that they are getting in their skin. Horrible. Um, but right, I would love to get that information more out there in people's hands. Um, homecoming has been really fun, exhausting, but fun. Uh, rave game, getting kids ready for dance, uh, but we had great community support and participation the whole week. I thought that was a lot of fun. Been to a lot of volleyball games and as was said, Ms. Brown, they are winning, winning, winning. Uh, ACE meets, middle school ACE team is also on fire. Uh, attended the bullying parenting session, uh, with Jim Jordan. That was very, um, very educational and it was good to see some people come out to that. We had a governor's school in South South Virginia meeting this week, so we'll report back on that next time.
I was also able to attend that bullying meeting and it was, again, informative. Um, but personal illness, I missed a few things this week. The, uh, the, uh, the American Regional Governor's School meeting and of course some other homecoming activities. No bad about that.
Okay, so we'll start with, uh, let's see. Uh, likewise with, um, Ms. Whittington and Dr. Harper, I attended the BSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference. We got to hear from some of our candidates for an election that's coming up here in just a couple weeks. Some of the, was someone there or did they all do, someone there in person or was it all videos?
There.
Uh, so we had to hear from them, which was, which was nice. Um, uh, let's see, we also received training on the Conflict of Interest Act. We had to check that box. That training is incomplete. Um, and then we, and then of course what you heard from, what her name was Dr. Peace, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Forensic toxicologist, something like that. Uh, yes, uh, if she really freaking her or somebody on her team to come and speak at our high school, oh my goodness. I mean, it's not just the things that they're inhaling and putting into their body, but you know, the, the kids that she had told us about who, who died from using these vapes that they think are okay. And goodness. Um, so then also on the twenty ninth, uh, Monday, the twenty ninth, I also was, uh, attended the bullying prevention workshop by Mr. Jordan from Canada. Came all the way down here from Canada. Uh, he was really good. Uh, something I never thought about before that he brought up and I don't know why this never dawned on me, but you know, obviously there's a bully, there's a victim, but there's also the bystanders. And that just really hit me, like, stop being a bystander. I mean, whether it's me, because there's, there's parents and the, and the bleachers yelling at the coaches at a football game, I can stand up and say, "Stop." And, and I, and I said, "That really took that to heart that I need to, I need to stop being a bystander" and, and say something when people are, you know, yelling and bullying, yelling at somebody. Um, and if we can impress that on our students, that the bully only has the power because you're letting them have the power. If you, if the kids would stop, you know, if they would just go, eh, eh, stop, stop it, then I think we could, you know, maybe make some progress there. Um, homecoming parade, I enjoyed, uh, walking, um, and handing out candy. And I teach preschool and I saw several of my former students and that, so that was super sweet to see, see them as I walked and see them on, on the foot as we came by. And then also attended the ANTC meeting not too long ago. So yes, we've had a...
A busy month.
We've had a busy month.
A busy month.
Yes. The month's almost over.
So in addition to all the amazing things, um, the only other thing that, that I would add, um, we have a Code RBA meeting this Thursday, so I don't have anything to report yet, but I was so honored, you guys, to be the grand marshal of the homecoming parade. It's like I practiced that whole night for that moment. Um, I'm just kidding, but I had a blasty blast and I almost made it, y'all. I was rationing that candy. I'm sure the kids were like, dude, a piece. I was trying so hard in my bag of candy and I made it right in front of the high school. And then I was like, oh, there were still a few families. I'm so sorry, but I had the best time. And it's always so wonderful to see, um, just the community come out and come together, um, and the energy around all of that. It's, it's like my favorite time of the year. Um, of course, you know, the Christmas parade is fun too, but I was just, I'm ready to, you know, sport that tutu. It's two tutus, actually. It's a green and a gold. Um, and I had the best time.
Pass that on to somebody.
I know, and then it hit me like midway through that I was like, this is my last homecoming, alright? And I got really sentimental. Um, but yeah, maybe I should. I should have passed on the tutus to Wes. That's good. Um, but it was lovely and so, um, thank you very much. Uh, I know that Mr. Hawkins, uh, when he reached out to me, he was like, you know, would you, would you please be our grand marshal? And I was so very honored. So thank you for, uh, for that very special moment. Um, but if there are no other reports... Oh, you do?
I do have an addendum.
Addendum, addendum to your report?
Thank the elementary school for the opportunity to do the recordings for Fish in the Tree.
Oh, yeah! Very cool.
I get to read to grandkids now, but, uh, I got to break my, uh, my, my reading voice out.
Ooh.
It's a very, yeah.
That's awesome. I love that. Um, alright, so is there any new business? Might there be any announcements? If there are not, might there be a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Dr. Erie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Garrity. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor wave a good night. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, y'all.